So we are reconvening the public session of the meeting of the Bronx School Board of Education. Thank you all for being here. It's been a great first couple of weeks of school from what we hear. It's exciting to be back. There's a good buzz in town and on the fields and in the front and in the building, so it's exciting. And we've got a relatively short meeting tonight because we just met. I'll turn it over to Rachel.
Okay. And I am going to allow Thomas Freeman, our ex officio student board member, to start us off.
Hello, everybody. I'm Thomas Freeman. I'm the president of SFL, which is Student Faculty Legislative. It's a club in the school. And last Tuesday, we had our first meeting. In the meeting, we kind of just went over introductions, how the club is run, who's the vice president, treasurer, and secretary of the club, and gave their expectations and why it's important for the school. We talked about the different committees in the club and what their goal is. Then we talked about the positions that the underclassmen and the upperclassmen who don't have an already elected position in the club, can run for, which includes co-chairs of the different committees and social media manager. And then we went over the plan for the year. Most recently, we're planning the spelling game, which will come sometime near Thanksgiving. Then we're also going to have to plan the holiday ball day, which is during the winter, field day during the spring, and candy grains and breast cancer, whatever is fun. And we had a meeting again today, and we just went over planning for the spelling game. That's really it so far.
How's your school year going so far?
It's been great. Senior is obviously full of college apps and definitely more peace than usual, but the teachers have been super nice with the work. And my testments faced out pretty well, so.
Good.
It's been going great. Info calls have been awesome as well.
Great.
Well, thank you for being here. Your mom called and said, please let him go first, so you can get him to take a shower.
And I did hear from your mom.
Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you, Thomas. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here. And then we just have to call for a motion to accept the draft minutes of the regular meeting of September 4th. Can I get a motion, please? Second. All in favor?
It is now my pleasure. As you know, we have dedicated each public meeting to emphasize our Bronxville promise so that the broader community has an understanding of how the language really plays out in our classrooms. And I have the honor of introducing this evening some of our high school teachers under the leadership of Dr. Ray LaVerse. Ms. Meyer is going to start us off a little bit. And then I have the pleasure of three English teachers in our high school. The department chair, our curriculum leader this year, Sarah Kaminski. And we have Samantha Landis Langsack. Only because you said that this morning. Pardon me. Langsack. And then, of course, Laura Dearman, welcome. And Anne, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, but we can all come up.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. This is, they'll give you context, but we are very happy to go broad on this new process that the English department created as it relates to choosing literature.
Thank you so much. I'm just going to spend a few moments to give you some context for the process. Early last year, with the English department, we decided to formalize our process for selecting texts for middle and high school English. I think prior to that, there was a process in place, but it was less formal. And because of the size of our school, our departments are small, and often we might have one teacher teaching all the sections of a particular course. So at times, that teacher made a decision about replacing texts. And what you'll hear today is that we've created a process that includes the entire department and goes through a series of steps as we consider what literature we may include in the curriculum and how it connects across the courses in the middle school or the high school. In this case, you'll hear about high school. And so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. LaVerse to go through some of the details.
Thank you, Anne.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. So tonight, our English teachers are going to be presenting on the development and the implementation of our text selection process. So this process began by researching best practices by looking at some of our neighbors. And then, based on what we found in that research, our teachers developed a series of robust evaluation criteria. These criteria were integrated into a larger systemic framework that the department reviewed as a whole. And then this was presented to our Strategies and Curriculum Committee last year for their endorsement. So this has been an ongoing process. It's meant to be an ongoing process that happens annually between January and April. And the English department is going to review and refine this curriculum each year. So when replacing a text, the department will rigorously search for at least three alternatives. Then two department members will be given the opportunity to read and review these works of literature. And then the entire department meets again to discuss the work and compare it against the established criteria. Once it's vetted, the recommendations by the English department are advanced to the building principal, the assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, and our superintendent. And the final step is to present this work to the Strategies and Curriculum Committee for their approval. So in order to see this in action, I'm going to turn it over to our teachers, starting with Ms. Sarah Kaminski.
Hi, everybody. So undertaking this process, we actually, it was a very opportune time because we had a text that we had already been sort of discussing that it didn't quite fit into the scope of the entire 10th grade year anymore. It was in the beginning of the year. It took a really long time to get through. The kids weren't connecting with it as much as they had been in the past. And the purpose that it served, so originally, part of the purpose of it was to connect what they were learning in world history with the apartheid that was happening in the context of the fictional text. But things shifted in 9th grade to sort of allow that to happen there as opposed to needing to have it at the beginning of 10th grade. And so the text just didn't quite fit what we needed it to. And we felt that the time that we were spending on this one book could be better suited in different areas, which that we'll speak to in a little bit. So we went through this whole process. We spent a day of our PD time doing this. And I'll speak again to the process itself at the end of the presentation. But we sort of went through, recorded everything, made our selections, and then we had a debrief about the process itself and sort of some of the things that worked well and some of the things that perhaps we need to consider for the next time around. And this was our first time doing it, so there's obviously going to be some things that we need to adjust going forward. Now, Sam Langsack is going to come up. Oh, sorry, Laura Dearman is going to come up.
So hi, Laura Dearman. So this is just an overview of the texts that we currently read or we read as of last year. We started with Bryce Courtney's The Power of One, which was the text that we decided we wanted to replace for some of the reasons that Sarah said. We read Georgia Orwell's 1984. We do some Shakespeare. We do Macbeth in 10th grade. We do Octavia Butler's Kindred. And finally, we finish up with Stephen King's The Shawshank Redemption. The overarching theme for the year is the individual's role in society, which builds on our 9th grade overarching focus, which is the role of the individual as students move into high school. So the one text, as Sarah mentioned, that we felt was slightly out of place, takes a little too long to teach, and is really, you know, quite dense and didn't quite fit, was The Power of One. So that's the text that we decided to use this new process on.
So essentially, what happened was we got together on a PD day, and we brought this problem that we had, which was, we'd really like to replace this book. What can we do? And as a department, we all kind of thought about different replacements that we could have. And we threw around a whole bunch of suggestions that ran the gamut. And what was really great was that we got everybody's perspective. So like AP teachers, what they would teach 9th grade, then the 10th grade teachers. And everybody kind of has a different area of expertise or area of interest. So we had a whole bunch of texts that, on their own, had literary merit. And we were really excited about them. And we narrowed them down just based on the topics, the genre, the connection to the 10th grade in general, what we felt kids would really want to read, what we felt they could read and should read. And then kind of looked at it with vertical alignment. And the three texts that we kind of narrowed it down to were Antigone, Persepolis, and then In the Time of the Butterflies. So we kind of took those three and then did a deep dive into all three of them.
So just a quick sort of reminder or overview of what we felt The Power of One added to the curriculum, because obviously, it's been being taught here for a long time, and it really is a rich text and did add a lot. And we wanted to make sure that any replacement added to or enhanced the curriculum rather than taking away anything that The Power of One gave us. So we were looking for texts that gave us some of these same thematic ideas to think about. Empowerment and self-determination, resistance within oppressive systems, particularly, The Power of One deals with pre- and slightly post-apartheid South Africa. Education is liberation and the interconnectedness of individual and community, which again, is one of those guiding focuses that we think about throughout the school year. So that's what we were looking for in our replacement text, something that gave us all of these things, but perhaps in a way that might refresh the way that we taught this unit and that gave kids maybe a more accessible way into those themes.
So again, just as an overview, so we ended up choosing Antigone, spoiler alert. But that is a tragedy about a young woman who defies the king's order. The king is her uncle. He says, you cannot bury your brother. She says, actually, I will. And it's her decision to do this and her conviction to do this. Persepolis, we kind of got a bonus because we ended up making that a summer reading text. And that is a graphic novel that follows a young girl's life during the Iranian revolution. And then the other text was Julia Alvarez's In the Time of Butterflies, which talks about the Mirabel sisters in the time of Trujillo and within the Dominican Republic.
Oh, yes. So big reveal, Antigone, sorry. We spoiled it. So I think we have a slide coming up that basically helps to provide our rationale for why, having looked at three texts, we went with Antigone. So it's a play. It's ancient Greek. It's a classic, obviously, but it's also very accessible. So we think it provides a really good introduction to both the play structure and language that might be unfamiliar to students, which helps us with our later study of Macbeth when we get into Shakespearean English. We also thought that this play really nicely builds on some of the threads introduced in 9th grade, where we study the Odyssey, which against a lot of the students, you know, they don't think they're going to like the Odyssey. It's a big book, and we get into the adventures. A lot of them, at the end of the year, say they really enjoy it, and we feel like we can build on that enthusiasm with like, yay, another Greek tragedy. It also supports work. We talked a lot about vertical alignment because we came together as a whole department to talk about this. Greek dialogues in the research seminar in education equity, which is done in 12th grade. The thematic focus is perfect. It talks about challenge the authority of the state within the boundaries of Greek society. There is conflict in there that we can explore between personal morality and state authority. These themes connect really nicely to Orwell's 1984, which is the next book that we study in 10th grade. Students get to examine structures of power and control. It also builds on the 8th grade Holocaust literature unit, especially Night, which explores the role of the individual, psychological frameworks for understanding, and bystanders versus upstanders. So Antigone really delivers the whole package in a small, but not to be sort of underestimated, package.
Yeah, so again, I spoiled this before, but Persepolis, we made summer reading. And then Antigone, we have added as the first book or play that we will read together in class. But like we said before, one of the things that we found was, again, The Power of One was wonderful, and it did the job. It was also really long. So when we mapped out the curriculum, we were spending about two and a half months on it, give or take. And with that being out now, Antigone is much shorter, but still has everything that we needed to have. But we were able to add, and we did a lot of work this summer, being very thoughtful and intentional about it. We were able to add an essay writing unit in the beginning of the school year to get all of the kids on the same page and focus on those skills. A literary elements unit that we've added, where again, we're practicing those skills, especially in writing. And all of this will culminate in an essay where they talk about Persepolis and Antigone and compare and contrast the two. So we'll be using all of those skills, and we've had the time now to thoughtfully build that into the curriculum, which I know that we'll keep and we'll keep adding on to that. And I think it's been a really nice transition for freshman to sophomore year to not just be given a million-page book and said, let's read. This has been a nice segue into being a sophomore, and I think the kids will really love it.
Before I get into the reflection of the process itself, I just want to add that I spoke to Ms. Allen, the art teacher, today. And she was actually saying that students, like one of her first pieces that they have to look at has to do with similar themes to Persepolis. And she said that this is the most active that sophomores have ever been in that conversation because they had a basis for what it was that they were talking about. And she like couldn't quite figure out why they were so active in it. And then it all sort of came together, and it was because they had read, all read Persepolis as their summer reading book. So there's some really lovely sort of crossover that's already happening with looking at the graphic novel. Like, I know young kids, like I have an eight-year-old son, and he's very into all the graphic novels, but I feel like they sort of grow out of that. And so sort of circling back to that is just a nice little refresher and get them to think about text in a different way. But in relation to the text selection process, so one of the things that we said made this process able to happen in the timeframe that it did was because multiple people in the department had already read all of the three books that we were proposing. So if we were to do this again, and we would have to sort of explore and read other texts, it would take us much longer just to even be able to begin the process because we don't unfortunately have all that time, much time on our hands to be reading multiple books at a time. So that's something to consider. It also just sort of opened up new possibilities. I know Ray mentioned that like usually, it's a conversation between maybe two members of the department. And this time, sort of opening it to the whole department, it was like, well, what about this? And we all just sort of nerded out over the course of the day with different texts that we could talk about. And any day we can spend just talking about and writing about literature is a pretty wonderful day. So it did take a whole day, as I said. And just sort of the viewpoint of everyone as opposed to a select few was really useful. But just the time would be something that we would have to manage going forward if we were to do this for another text.
So I, just to close that, I just wanted to thank the department. We sort of proposed instituting a process. And sometimes that's, you know, people think they already know how to handle things. They were very open to this, incredibly collaborative with one another and with us to make sure that this made sense. And hopefully, you can see that they dove right in and are so excited about the outcome, which I think just speaks to their commitment to the work that they're doing and their openness to exploring this new way of choosing texts. So we're really looking forward to other opportunities. And I just want to thank them. It was a lot of work.
Just to start, this is extremely impressive. The amount of time and effort that you guys spend on this. And I know it was, I think it was sort of a bold ask of us to you guys to take this on. And we were all sort of wondering if this was going to be like intimidating or if this was something that you guys were really going to enjoy. And it's amazing to hear the outcome and that everyone's excited about it. Did it feel a little different for you guys going into this process? And also, is this something that's unique to Bronxville? Do we know of other schools that are doing something similar?
I know that there are some schools that have a process in place. And Ray and I spoke a lot about what that looks like. But I think the success of this also rests on just the dedication these teachers have to teaching English and literature. And we could see how excited they were to talk about it. But you guys can speak to the first question.
Was it a real challenge to get, to start wrapping your head around this process?
I don't think the process itself. It was, I mean, it was definitely like when we looked at the paper initially, we were like, oh, my goodness, there's so many steps and so many things that we need to sort of take into account as we're doing this. I mean, I think, again, like if it had taken longer, like having to read the books, it might have felt a little different. But because we could all sort of come to the table with something to offer in the sphere of the themes and the progression, it didn't, I don't think it felt too onerous or complex.
No, I think it actually got us to think about the texts that we were choosing, not just based on like what we liked, but what this could bring to the table. And it was definitely in-depth, but I would say, I think, helpful for us pathologically, like to think about book that way. Not that we don't already, but just like to think about it on paper and think about all three of them and which one to choose and kind of how to do that. But I think it was nerding out.
Yeah, in terms of the process, it was enjoyed. Like, we were so happy to just talk about books for a second.
They literally took the criteria and for each text evaluated every component of the criteria for that text and then compared the evaluation to each other and then came to a decision. So it was, it sounds like, oh, it was a lot of fun. They did a lot of work. What they presented was, wow, okay, that's amazing. I think, and again, we're just going to need to think through planning ahead and then planning the time to do this thoughtfully the next time a text comes up.
I do want to say, though, to Eddie's point, that I remember when we were in committee and we originally talked about the possibility of this. I remember saying that there, you saying that you couldn't find other models at other districts that like oftentimes, you do something like this, and you take a model that's working elsewhere, and you refine it for what works for you. But this is really an original framework. I mean, it really is. And I don't think we were able, that's one of the things at the beginning, I remember. We could not, we were wondering why other districts had not done it in a formal way. But in a way, this is really just leading the pack. I think this is why people move here, is because of the depth of work and effort that you're putting into this. And it really, I think, raises the bar for academics in our curriculum. So thank you.
And great, you know, we bring new teachers in. Here's our process. This is, we don't know where you came from. This is how we do things. This is how we work as a team. That's how we raise the bar as a group. So thank you for all the work. Pretty amazing.
Can I just ask, how would you have approached this before?
Typically, it was, you would sort of see a need, right? Whether it was a whole, whether it was like a newer text that you might want to introduce that was thematically, you know, worked within the confines of your year. And then typically, it would be the teachers who taught that grade level. So several years ago, it was like the three 10th grade English teachers who sort of came together. We talked about a couple, like it was very informal. It was just sort of like a conversation where it was like, oh, what about this? What about this? And then we would sort of pick whatever best fit. It was, it was a much more scaled-down version of this. Like, I've never, in 18 years, haven't been involved in a process like this for book selection. So it was just, this made it easier to see on paper. And then also, in doing that, I feel like the whole writing unit came to fruition because of this, too. Like, if we had not done this process, that writing unit might not have been in 10th grade this year, which I think is really, really useful and needed.
That's great.
Great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So well done.
Thank you.
I mean, we could end the meeting here. Now I'm going to ask Ms. Meyer to come back up to the podium. Typically, this time of year, we present our achievement profile. We do have to wait until the state unembargoes the test results. They have done so, and it has allowed us to put together this profile that our assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction will lead us through.
Thank you. So we are going to go through the state test results for 3rd through 8th grade math and ELA, as well as the 5th and 8th grade science results, the Regents and the AP exam results. So we'll begin with the New York State ELA results. So here you can see 3rd through 8th grade, and we include comparison districts. These are the districts that we use every year. And the red line is of those districts, the lowest score. And the green line is of those districts, the highest score per grade level. Just a couple of things to note here for context. Our 3rd grade had very significant improvement in performance this year. Last year, they didn't do as well, and they put in a lot of work in relation to ELA and math. And that performance is demonstrated in the 85. And that also speaks a bit to the 4th grade performance because those students last year had a 69% proficiency, and now they've improved to an 82. So there actually has been quite a bit of improvement. And then you can see in 5th through 8th outstanding results.
Yeah, I just want to interject. I've been carrying out around last year's presentation for a year because I wanted to make sure those 3rd graders moved up. So that's a great improvement. Good for them.
Yeah, that team did a fantastic job.
Just round them, really.
And then if we look at the math results, the graph is structured the same way with the red and green. I'll speak to the 8th grade in a moment. This is, the math, remember, is a brand-new curriculum that we implemented last year. So these results are quite outstanding because these teachers taught that curriculum for the first time. That is really because we have a fantastic math coach, Ashley Chippa, who's supported them along the way. And just extremely skilled faculty delivering the curriculum, but outstanding results here. And if you look at 8th grade, the students that take that exam are our students who are in Math 8. Majority of our students take Algebra 1. And so these are our students who struggle a bit more with math, and that result is unbelievable for those students. So I just want to congratulate Mrs. Zonin Shine, who teaches those students and did an unbelievable job with them with a 90% proficiency in our students who struggle the most with math. So these are fantastic results as well. And then, we'd just like to take a look at historically how we've done. It's good to put in context how this past year's results compare. So you can see in ELA, this is all of our students combined. The dark blue is the percent proficient, so receiving 3 and 4 in all of 3rd through 8th grade, which continues to be outstanding. That's 88% proficient across 3rd through 8th. And then in math, we have, whoops, back one. Back. Spoiler alert again. Nope, back. There you go. So that's math, again, all of 3rd through 8th proficiency, and that's 89%, which is outstanding. Please stop me if you have questions. And then, as I mentioned before, we have many of our 8th grade students take Algebra 1. What you'll notice along the bottom is when we tracked Algebra 1, which is to say that students had to be in a particular 7th grade class to be able to get into Algebra 1. And then in 2022, we made it open enrollment. And what we like to make sure of is that our students are performing in a similarly excellent way on the Algebra 1 exam. And you can see with open enrollment, we have more students taking Algebra 1 and still doing extremely well. You can go to the next slide. This is just the specific. This is just the specific results. Not only do we have almost all students reaching proficiency, 80% are scoring a level five, to the highest level. If we look at the science results, these were new tests last year. And I was able to take a look at some of the questions on the fifth grade science test, and it reminded me of the high school living environment regions. They were very, very difficult questions. And our students actually did quite well when we compare ourselves to other districts. But you can see that our faculty have done even more work and improved. So in light blue is the 2024 result, and in darker blue is this past year. So again, fifth and eighth grade science continuing to improve the results on those tests.
Do you, do you have, Anne, information on how our scores compare to our peer group?
For the science, I don't believe they have released that. I would have to check. The first year, they did not. But I, I can look into that. When I anecdotally checked the prior year, we did quite a bit better than most districts. If we take a look at our high school state test results, these are the science Regents test results. And you can see that all of these students are doing extremely well. And in physics and chemistry, those are AP students who take a course that's not even aligned to the test. They just have to take the test at the end of the year. In living environment, we have some students who take that in ninth grade, who struggle in science. And we try to get the New York State Science Regents out of the way, and they actually all passed, ooh, last year. So again, strong results, although to be honest with you, we don't focus on the Regents exams so much in the high school. And so just to round out the Regents exams, these are the other four Regents exams that we administer. And this is all of the algebra one data, not just the eighth grade. So we do have some high schoolers who take algebra one. But this is our English, our US, and our world history, as well as the algebra one Regents. All students to graduate have to take all of these and one science. And so more of what we wanna ensure that our students are performing well on are the AP exams. We offer 22 different AP courses, which is quite a lot for a small school. And if you look, even last year, we continued to expand the total number of students taking at least one AP. It is, um, it is the case, based on research, that if a student takes an AP before going to college, they're more likely to graduate in four years from that college, regardless of how they do on the exam. The exposure to college-level coursework in high school is extremely important. And so to have as many students take these courses, I think demonstrates that we're trying to prepare them for college. And you can see the, even the number of exam, well, the number of exams expanded partially because total number of AP students. Also, some students continue to take more APs. I don't know that I think that's a great idea, but it continues to happen. And then the bottom two numbers on the far right are the AP students with scores of three or above on at least one of the exams, which again, has increased. And then our percent of all of our students who've taken exam, who've scored at least a three on at least one. And a three is passing. So the way we interpret that is we continue to expand access to APs, and more students are also doing well on those. So you can imagine that all of our top students already take APs. So who are the students who are getting expanded access? It's kids who aren't taking them. And we want them to take those to be successful in college. And they actually are doing quite well. And now what we've all been waiting for, college matriculation data. So this is the class of 2025, college matriculation data in relation to the US News and World Report categories. And so you can see what types of schools our students went to. We're not trying to get kids to go to the top schools. We're trying to have kids find a school where they want to be, so that they can be successful. But this does demonstrate our success in the admissions process. So if you look at the top 25, it's actually 50 schools. It's top 25, um, national universities and smaller colleges. So it includes schools like all of the Ivy Leagues, but also like University of Michigan, University of Virginia, et cetera. You go to the top 26 to 50, those are schools, and these are schools that our students apply to and attend. Bates, Holy Cross, Colorado, Bucknell, NYU, UT Austin. And then the top 51 to 100 would include Stony Brook, Penn State, UConn, et cetera. And other tends to be international schools or other schools, like an art school, for instance. If we go to the next slide, we look at the same graduating class, but with the Barrens categories of most competitive, highly competitive, very competitive. And 67% of our students went to most competitive. And actually, if you go to the last slide, Connie, sorry. I think this is probably the most useful slide, which looks at the class of 2025 in those Barrens categories and compares it over time. So we get a sense of how did last year's class do compared to prior classes. And most competitive, which is in the light blue, would include schools like the Ivies, Northwestern, Notre Dame, Middlebury. The highly competitive would include schools like Indiana, BU, TCU, UConn, and then down the line. So our students continue to do exceptionally in this process. And Erin can help me answer any college questions. But I'm here to answer anything else you might have.
You know, on the APs, I like the thought that encouraging students to take those classes helps prepare them for college-level work. That's a nice objective of expanding access to the APs. But I'm curious if also, from an admissions perspective, if we still feel that a four or a five, usually they're looking for a four or a five on an AP exam for it to help you at all in admissions. Is that still the case?
Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, I, I, I think it's all relative to the student and where they're applying to college. But in terms of once you get to where you're going, earn credit for the, for the, for the class, for this graduation, you do need a four or a five.
Yeah.
But, you know, the, the data point that Anne shared, colleges are obviously very familiar with. And, you know, we know, the colleges are tracking performance in high schools. And you, you know, these tests are obviously standardized. So, you know, the, the AP computer science test in Bronxville is the same in Texas, in California, and China. So your score on that to any given college could indicate how you're gonna perform when you get to their school, because they have years and years of data of students earning that score. So I think depending upon where you're applying to college, a three could be a good signal to that admissions office that this student's capable of being successful at, you know, following up in college.
Okay. Is it possible for us to know how many students score fours and fives?
I mean, we have the data broken out by test.
Okay.
And by student.
Okay.
So yes, I can get that.
And I just have a question on, on your, uh, your peer group. And I know you said that you gave a list in the beginning, and you said this is pretty standard, these are the schools you compare ourselves to. Why do we compare ourselves to these schools? I mean, what, what exactly are the parameters around this period? What are we sharing, I guess? What makes these good peers to compare?
I mean, from my perspective, it is who we have traditionally compared ourselves to. So over time, it's helpful for me to see, again, how we've done compared to those groups. But also, they're the highest performing schools in Westchester.
I was wondering, you know, was it size of community or school, or was it?
It's mostly performance.
Performance, okay. That's good to know.
Academic performance.
Because they, that, the seven include some small schools, some larger schools.
Yeah.
It's really based on high performance.
Okay.
Senior year APs, when they take the exam and they've already been admitted to college, though, do you see a decline in the, because they're in, right? Unless they need the credit too, you know? Like it's just sometimes, you know, the data was great with four and fives sophomore, junior year. But senior year, they take it.
Some years worse than others.
Right.
Yes, we do see.
It's a variable.
It is.
Right.
So our Regents' score should be better.
Our scores should be better. Yes, yes. But actually, I will say, the last few years, the seniors have done quite well. And we, we have had faculty proctor those exams. That was a switch we made. Just stay awake. Work for the four hours, because you have to be here.
But do they use those scores? I mean, do people submit?
Some do for some courses.
If they want credit or they wanna?
Again, it sort of depends on where you're going. I mean, there's a huge bucket of schools that you can get fives on a VC calculus and they're not gonna care. But, you know, if you go outstate public schools, interstate public schools, I mean, you can accrue a lot of credits. Students are definitely using those. And then there's, you know, it's tricky, because there's probably students going to more colleges that maybe don't accept, you know, any test. You know, that may be test results. We're very specific. It's calculus, chemistry, physics, right? So it depends on where they're going. And to somebody's point, like they know that, to your point, they know that, and they know where they're going, and they know what they're gonna major in potentially. And so, you know.
They know which exams to focus on. But also, it's not even credit, per se. It might pass them into a higher level course, even if they don't get credit. Or if they do get some credit, it gives some students flexibility to study abroad, even though they have a major that's challenging. So I mean, there's a lot of reasons to do your best, including you have to be there for four hours. So, you know, that's kind of the message we give them, is there's a reality to it, and then put forth your best effort, because that's just what you should do. Yeah. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Anne.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Susan, I think it's safe to say you can shred your 2024 test results.
There will be a three-year comparison next year.
Rachel, you got some personnel?
Yes. Um, I just wanted to say a quick, uh, a few quick remarks. First of all, another welcome back to everybody. We are in the thick of the season of back-to-school evenings. We had our high school back-to-school night opportunity to meet the faculty last week. This coming Thursday, we have the middle school, with next week, the elementary school. And it's just a wonderful opportunity to welcome the parents into our school and to hear more about our curriculum. In the spirit of transparency and effective communication, both areas, this leadership team and this board in particular, have intentionally focused on this past two and a half years. I'd like to take a moment to lend some context to our work surrounding civil discourse. Part of what makes us distinctive is that this school never rests on our laurels. We could, because we're that good, and yet, we don't. Instead, we live and we breathe the Bronxville promise, which was most recently updated in 2023. In that update, we added indicators that speak to responsibly and ethically using advancing technology. We created a fifth, very critical disposition of belonging. And we added civil discourse to our critical thinking disposition. And that indicator reads, "Students will engage in civil discourse by asking questions and listening, honoring diversity of thought, respectfully engaging in conversation, and identifying common ground." This is work we've been engaged with and refining over the last three years. The purpose is to explore various perspectives on issues in a way that allows for respectful dialogue in a developmentally appropriate manner. I'd like to add that we are also in touch with colleges and universities. They continue to be impressed that we are working to teach our students these important skills prior to our students entering their campuses. They've expressed that they wish more high schools would prepare their students in this area. We take great pride in doing our best to prepare our students for not only their next chapter upon graduation from Bronxville, but also to build these skills to protect, prepare them for life. Ultimately, we continue to ensure that our students are taught how to think, not what to think. And now I have some personnel items.
Thank you, Rachel.
Pretty short personnel agenda, given that we had just met. But you have before you for consideration our middle school advisors. There are some changes to the substitute teacher and teacher aid lists. We have an additional teacher resident in the elementary school. And I'm very pleased to share that we have before you two fall coaches for a modified girls volleyball team. We have never had modified girls volleyball. There was some interest. We did some measuring of our gymnasiums, and we're making it work. So we're very excited about that. Over 20 girls are interested. So you have two coaches on, on tonight's agenda. So I ask you to consider items A through K, please.
Take them together, Connie? A through K. Any questions on the personnel items? So can we have a motion, please, to approve the personnel action items?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carlin?
Yep, we're, we're, we've closed two months into the new year. They're the two easiest months, because we don't pay a single teacher during those months. Those results are showing expenditures that were on target with no anomalous occurrences. And, you know, obviously, we spend comparatively little over the summer months, because the cost of most of the staffing and the students don't begin until September. We should see more clarity by November, as salaries and special education tuition expenses for outplacements are fully encumbered. We're anticipating another decent year for revenues, as non-resident tuition will come in above budget. You'll hear a little bit about that later. And we have a good start with interest income. We got our, you know, we got our big tax payment over the summer. And I think through July, we're probably about a quarter of our way into hitting our budget with interest income, which is great. We'll see what the Fed does. I guess it's tomorrow, right? So that, that, obviously, if they, if, if we're in a declining rate environment, that could impact us there. But when we go to borrow, it'll be good news. So we borrow a lot more than we have in the bank, so that's, we'd rather see lower interest rates than higher interest rates.
Can I ask just about a couple of transfers in July and August? Looks like we're needing to move some budget into this services, operations and maintenance services line item. What is that for?
That's for both cleaning and security.
And is it, are we spending?
We're spending a little more in security these days.
Okay. Thank you.
And in projecting fund balance for the end of the year, you know, we're gonna be down probably close to five and a half million dollars, simply because we anticipate transferring out about $5 million from our capital reserve to our, our capital fund when we start the next project, hopefully in the summer of '26. And the finance committee met last week. I'm sure Susan will have a report later. But we, a few items discussed were surplus analysis regarding the 2425 expenditure budget and how it might inform the '26, '27 budget development upcoming, updating five-year projections for review at the board level, and, and then some, you know, other bit, housekeeping as far as, uh, health insurance and things like that. And as is typical in this meeting, we have an abnormal. we have an abnormally large amount of financial action items. They should start slowing down in October, but just getting ready for another school year. We have items A through D, our special education and people, personnel services contracts with providers for services throughout the year. Item E is non-resident students for the board to approve for the 2025-2026 school year. 16 paying full tuition, that's one less than last year as we graduated a bunch. And 19 children of faculty with seven paying the faculty rate. And again, those, I guess it's 23 who are paying tuition will probably exceed the budget by about 10 to 20%. So we're, we're in good shape. Item F, we intend to piggyback on the Hastings bid for athletic and field trip transportation, just like we did the last two years with Academy Bus. And then related to item F is item G. It's our emergency resolution for bus driver shortage, enabling us to seek alternative arrangements when our primary contractor, that being Academy Bus from item F, is unavailable to accommodate us. We were able to cover all away games last year between a few contractors, our own buses, and Academy Bus, which was a great improvement. Prior year, we actually had parents transporting some of our teams to games. We're, hopefully, we're out of that business for good. And with this resolution, that helps us get there. Item H, food service renewal for Chartwells. This is our final year of our five-year contract, which we bid five years ago. So we will definitely be going out to bid this year. We're happy with their service. I think they're going to try and do a better job at communicating what exactly they do for us and what they provide for our kids this year. And, you know, we'll be bidding out next year. And we're also going to take a, a good, hard look at continuing the program as it is now versus participating with the National School Lunch Program. Because it's, it's a different ballgame now that the funding for the National School Lunch Program is up so that a typical lunch, which is, most of our students do not eat typical lunches, by the way. But a typical lunch is fully funded by the state and the feds now in the National School Lunch Program. So we'll, we'll take a hard look at that when we go out to bid. And last but not least is item I, the updated resolution for the installment purchase agreement with Southern Westchester Bosse's Regional Information Center to include some additional items. We bought less Chromebooks when we originally were approved for the IPA, so we have to adjust it a little bit. We're buying less Chromebooks and buying more other things. Is Brad around? He could tell what those other things are. How are you standing in the corner?
Yeah, we'll be purchasing more BenQ boards for classrooms and some smart lockers and some other improvements for classrooms and the hallways.
I read the memo, Brad. I was going to ask, what is, what exactly is a BenQ board? Is that just?
It's just a particular type of board that we really like. It can be networked together. And so we can do updates. We can remotely fix anything that's needed. And then also it gives us the ability to flash emergency messages. So there's a lot of benefits to this particular type of interactive.
Thank you.
So I'm happy to entertain any questions. If not, we have items A through I.
Take them together? All right. So can I please have a motion to accept items A through I? Financial action items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Dan, again?
Moving on to facilities, there's no action items. And there's no, been no change really from what we discussed two weeks ago. We're still looking at Thanksgiving for getting the doors and the security vestibule. And a couple more weeks, hopefully, for the roof on the flood pump shelter.
Great. And no other action items?
Nope. I think, oh, well, one more update. We're going to start, I think we're going to meet this week with a fencing contract or to look at options for, you know, I don't want to say an attractive fence, but probably something that'll help blend in along Midland Avenue and just, just provide easier sightlines or more palatable sightlines for anybody passing by instead of just looking through a chain link fence at those huge pumps.
Great. And that budget for the fence was included in the original budget numbers, right?
The fence is included in the budget numbers. You know, some kind of covering is not. But so far, there's been no change orders on that project. So we were, haven't even hit the allowance yet. So it's, it's all in the allowance without even going to contingency yet.
Okay. Fantastic. And if anybody hasn't yet checked out the new Pondfield entryway, where the new security vestibule is going, the woodwork is. Yeah, it's almost, you almost can't tell the difference between that and the original. It was done so well. So thanks, Dan and Michael, he was not here tonight, but for making sure that the school remains looking great. Committee reports? Anybody? PTA, foundation, policy?
Foundation, we met last week and this week. Kind of just looking at orientation. Amy Akison is the new president. Deirdre Dooney is head of public relations. They're redoing the whole website. They've created a new logo. And it's like BSF, but then it has a key in the middle of it, like the key to the promise. Looks really good. All the, our administrators donated, Dr. Kelly gave a check to the foundation last night. All our administrators donated to the foundation. Thank you very much. I said, you know, I'll make sure all the school board members pledge on the foundation this year. The foundation does amazing work. And just off to a good start.
Great.
So PTA, Susan, we had our first executive meeting with the entire committee and listened to all the wonderful things the PTA has planned. The socials have kicked off and that is, that's our biggest fundraiser. It generates all the money that we give back to the PTA. And there was the new families reception on the front lawn last Friday. Thank you and thank you, the new families committee for that. 59 new children, 40 new families. Really good time by all this year. It was a change. They invited the kids. So there are activities for the boys, the girls, climbing trees. It was, it was a really.
Keep more trees still on the front.
What? They're on the flagpole. But I mean, it was a really, really beautiful night on our beautiful front lawn. So thank you to Susan for all you're doing for the PTA. And then quickly, Rachel already mentioned it, but we're very excited about the volleyball team on the athletic side and extremely excited about the number of internal coaches that are coaching our teams this year. We had a number come out for volleyball. And we're hoping next year, with all the interest we've had, we may have a high school team. So thank you, Anthony. And a number of parents have come back to say we're so excited that we now have volleyball. And now we're looking to potentially add some. So we'll see on that, but those are my.
Settle down.
And, and most of the, most of the girls on the volleyball team were not playing sports before, right? This is, a lot of them are new.
I think we took two away. We took two away from, two of the fall field hockey girls. The rest are new, which is super exciting. And if they did take some more girls away, that would be okay too because these fall sports, I mean, they are oversubscribed. So.
149 modified.
Yeah. The numbers trend, if you look at the participation numbers, they're not too far off. It seems like we've just gained the volleyball. At the modified level, I think we're up 16 kids. With those numbers from last year, I mean, they're, they're a trend pretty even.
That's great.
They don't look like we really took from anybody. I mean, you say we took two, you know, field hockey girls. They originally registered for field hockey. I'm not sure if that was their place. You know, kids that come up might have to switch like last minute to go with their friends. I just sort of, it didn't even.
That's great.
So for finance, the committee met last week. Just to fill in what Dan was saying, we did review last year's surplus. The headline there is that we're grateful to have some unbudgeted surplus to put toward the capital reserve as we get ready for this next big project. We're still in the process of kind of picking apart where the surplus resulted to help inform the next budgeting cycle. The, we've also begun trying to project out a little farther, five years out, and hope to incorporate that as part of our regular financial reporting. And as a result, we can see where the debt service for this next project comes in '27, '28. Budget's going to be very challenging. So we're talking about how to manage that partly by keeping a careful eye on expenses, especially health insurance and transportation costs, but also potentially the use of reserves or notes to help smooth out that big bump in '27, '28. But likely, there's going to be some pressure. There, there will be pressure on the budget and likely some pressure on the tax base. We reviewed the capital project borrowing schedule. It's all a lot of theory until we start getting a little more certainty on rates. But, you know, we continue to, to review it and try to our best to anticipate. And then finally, we've been on the health insurance front. Given all the recent significant increases, much of which, and even more on the way, as reported pretty widely this week. We have engaged and we're, we're preparing to engage at least one consultant to have a look at our, our current plans and to work with us on potential alternatives for how to more efficiently deliver good health insurance here to Bronxville. And I think that covers finance committee.
Thank you, Susan. On behalf of all of us up here, just want to thank you for your, your, being our fiscal hawk on here and keeping such a close eye on everything. The community probably doesn't understand all the work that you put in. So, so thank you.
Yeah. So I just, I think as last, last but not least, we did have a strategies and curriculum meeting this morning. And the discussion was around civil discourse and the units that the teachers have developed over the summer. It was, it was quite impressive. I, I think it's interesting that during the book selection, we went through Antigone. And there's actually, so the, the topics they're choosing are both in social studies and in the English literature curriculum. So they're using a piece of, you know, a Greek play, a Greek tragedy, as a way of discussing civil disobedience within it and going through the civil discourse framework to take fiction and to make that relatable and how do you take positions there? And how do you have a civil discussion about the protagonists and the other elements of the story? It was very original. I mean, it's very impressive the work they're doing. But I love that they're also taking it into this other area of focus. And I thank you, Rachel, for introducing the fact that we're not telling them what to think. We are teaching them how to think and to be better critical thinkers. That's a thrust. And I don't know if you want to add anything to that because Ann is certainly the, the leader of the pack.
I wanted to thank the foundation because they funded a lot of this work this summer, the curriculum work. And, yeah, we heard from social studies and English teachers who've developed discourses that will be implemented right now. And then we have many more to go through with the committee that were developed to go later in, in the year. So it's exciting work.
It is.
And I think it's really important for our students.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, I guess with that, we have our board retreat on October 6th. We're all looking forward to that. And then our next regular meeting is October 16th. Back here, same time, same place, regular time, 7:00 PM. And I guess now is, open the floor for public comments. Please state your name and as usual, let us know if you have any questions or concerns. And we're here to, to listen and perhaps engage. Anything online, Brad? Yeah? All right. With that, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight.
Thank you, Tom.